We probably should do that before we do anything else. I don't care who does it, we just should do it before we do anything else, right? Oh, oh, I was gonna do the whole thing. All right, we'll go ahead and call them in to order at 6:32. And the first item on the agenda is the selection of a new chair. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Sherman.
I will accept nominations for Chair of the Pembroke School Board.
I know. I will nominate Andy Cammidge as Chair of the School Board.
Because you have to vote on it, yeah. So Carrie, okay?
I'm happy to continue to do it, but I'm also not opposed if anybody else wants to do it.
Are there other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Andy.
I have stayed for the record, Sandy.
Okay, then we will continue on with the agenda. We've got public comment next, but there are no members of the public present, so we will continue on. Sorry? Oh, right, that's right. Right, yeah, right, right. Millions watching at home. Okay, agenda review, any additions or?
I have an additional consent item, so that would make two. And I have a couple of informational items when we get there.
I have an informational item when we get there, too.
All right, anything else before we move on? All right, we have minutes, a couple of sets of minutes. If there's no corrections, I'll take a motion to do them together. If there are...
Motion to approve February 7 and February 21 minutes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, then all in favor of approving the minutes from February 7 and February 21, 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, done and done. All right, board reports. So we've got Jake with us tonight. How's it going? Not too bad. What's going on with Student Senate?
So for Senate, we conducted our winter carnival. I would say it was pretty successful. Like the feedback we got, everyone had fun. And we had to condense it into one day due to like weather. But I think a lot of people actually liked the one day because I feel like it was really eventful and everyone was like, I feel like since it didn't span throughout two days, everyone really wanted to get in there and like participate. So we definitely got good feedback from the school. And then also everyone in Senate like contributed equally, I would say, and everyone like had a good time. So then we just, today at our meeting, we just talked about, we're gonna have a blood drive. So we had a lady from the Red Cross come today and she just talked about if she would, she's gonna have some people from Senate help out with that. So whether it be like taking like down names or just like simple tests for that. So we're, yeah, we're planning the blood drive and that's it. This is our like first main meeting since Winter Carnival, so yeah, that's basically what we've been working on.
Awesome, thanks. Any questions for Jake? All right, thanks for being here. And as always, you can go whenever you want to. We don't want to ruin your Tuesday night. Mr. Coughlin's not with us, but might be later. Do you have anything or do you want to wait until? Okay, yeah. No, that's good.
Okay, from Mr. Coughlin Facilities Report says the new stage curtains were installed at Pembroke Academy and they look fantastic. Lighting controls were installed in the Pembroke Academy auditorium, allowing easier access to the lights while performances take place. The new boiler for the kitchen steamer was installed in the PA kitchen. The door access controls were finished at Pembroke Academy. We will look to finish Three Rivers and Hills over April break. The kitchen hoods received their six-month inspection at PA Three Rivers and Hill. We had a kitchen sink at PA repaired and seam welded. Mike Stanton from Market Advantage came in and performed a floor stripping demo for the crew. Three Rivers has a fire suppression pipe replaced in their upper attic. Our second round of water testing was taken at PA Three Rivers and Hill and shipped out to the lab. It was done in conjunction with New Hampshire DES and the New Hampshire Get the Lead Out of Drinking Water Program grant. On Wednesday, I was able to take a group of three to the Northern New England Facility Masters Conference. And on Thursday, I took a group of six. Both were full days of speakers and classes with a vendor fair. Our group took classes on anything ranging from HVAC, energy, managing stress, building perspective, tools to navigate changing conditions, wood heat for schools, get the lead out of the water, and asbestos in schools, to name a few of the opportunities. Three Rivers had four of their new exterior doors installed. We will look to finish these over April break. More training occurred as I took Tim Zanis to the Northern New England Turf Conference. Classes were taken on anything from proper aeration, equipment repair, electrical theory, and equipment electrical systems, to name a few. Lastly, I would like to give a brief shout out to the facilities crew for their work during the last storm, specifically for their work to keep Pembroke Academy free of snow, allowing the residents the ability to vote in the election. Our crew was awesome. Thank you, Josh.
Any questions or comments without Josh here?
I'll say that last item. I'm not 100% sure because the weather was not good. But I'm pretty sure I saw him in the tractor on Election Day, clear and snow. Cool. So we've got principals. So I think we'll start with Dr. Morris.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll start with an athletic update. We had a very successful winter sports season. Winter track, we had four individuals and two relay teams that, who qualified for states. Three of the four individuals placed and we had four school records broken this past winter season, so that was exciting. Our Pembroke Academy Varsity cheer team placed fifth place at the state competition at Pickerton Academy. Our PAC hockey team made it to the semifinals. That was up in Plymouth. Our girls' basketball team with a very young team made it to the quarterfinals. They had a nice season. And boys' basketball had a tough loss against a Pelham team at UNH. And all of those things, with the exception of winter track, happened in one week. So it's a lot happening. I want to give you a NIESC update. Jeannie Johnson and Kristen Doyle are our steering committee co-chairs. And over the break, they submitted our self-reflection report, which is approximately 65, 70 pages. It was approved by the staff. They submitted that as well as the supplemental materials that the NIESC committee had asked for. And we are currently preparing for our collaborative conference visit, which will take place on April 5 and April 6. A week after that, we have the Eddies. So PA was again selected to move forward to the next stage of the process with the Eddies. And we will host the Eddies visiting team on April 12. So looking forward to that. Amy Parkinson has given a course registration presentation to each of the upperclassman classes last week. And Monday night yesterday, she gave a registration information session with Robert Michaud to our incoming freshmen. Additionally, this week, we have SATs tomorrow for our juniors. And that actually poses a big hurdle for us this year because this is, I believe, the second year that they are done all on computer. So that is actually a little bit more impactful than it used to be when we had paper and pencil. And then I'll just echo Jake's thoughts with Winter Carnival. He's being kind of modest. He starred in the skit this year for the junior class and he did a great job. Your acting chops were excellent. And, you know, Jake had mentioned that we had to shorten Winter Carnival to one day. And I thought that the student senators, as well as Lindsay Fontaine and Lindsay Mullin, our Senate advisors, did a great job of, they had contingencies in place and they had a schedule that, I think, really kind of condensed things in a way that was meaningful. What they didn't want to do, and I agreed with them, was coming back after break. And attendance historically is an issue when you have a gym day after the break and it's not the same experience. And I think, for the most part, senators, they debriefed about that and I think they would agree with that. So anyway, nice job with Winter Carnival. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for Dr. Morris? All right, we'll move to Ms. Marston.
Hi, folks. We, I can't believe it, but we're into the spring sports again. Seems like that was yesterday. Our tryout started today, I believe it was, and our numbers are up, which is really exciting. We had about 27 tryout for baseball, which was a ton. We had about 24, 25 for softball. And we have a staff member this year that has volunteered to try to start a track and field group. We had another 25 there. So that's a ton of kids. Hopefully, the track and field is something that if we can prove over two or three years, obviously, I won't be doing it, but hopefully, we'll be able to bring, you know, that and make that a position. I think it's something that we've looked at for a long time and I'm kind of excited to see that that, at least we get some interest. So that's a good thing. We'll see it when it comes as we go on. Musical is up and going, Mulan Junior. And it's really, really fun to watch them going at it. They, Scott Tibodaw from the high school comes down and does a lot of music. And it's really fun to hear that. And the end of the day, you hear the songs developing and everything. So we're excited to have that. The dates will be the April 13, 14, and 15. And I, the problem with this group is the expectations remain high. So they don't, you know, there's no room for nothing but great. So they've always done an awesome job. Today, we evacuated to PA. Every year, we try to do an evacuation versus a regular drill, a fire drill. And I think it's two years now, Dan. PA, you know, has a, basically a concert going on. And so we try, we just tie it all together, do an evacuation, come up, and they host us. And they do a great job of presenting their band and chorus. They do a little Q and A afterwards. And then we go back. We can get up here in under, well, it's about 11 minutes, I think it was today. And it was a slow start getting out of the building. So kids did not know it was happening, staff did. If I had my brothers, nobody would have known because that makes it a real emergency. But everything was orderly and kids came up and did our thing. And the band and chorus up here are awesome, so it was really nice to see a full stage. It was really great. Our eighth graders are in the selection process for PA. That's always interesting, but I will tell you, the process is so much better than it used to be. It's all electronic and so we're not running around trying to find eighth graders' little slips of paper. Did you fill it out? Did you get it signed? Oh, no, you can go back and get it signed. So that's been great. We also went through a little bit of shock therapy on our snow day that we had a professional day. We did it online. And I think everybody was like, oh my God, are we really doing this again? But we had a pretty successful day. I was very pleased with the response from staff. And we actually got a lot done. I was hesitant, but we really did, they did a really nice job of staying focused and getting that done. So that's about it, I think.
Thank you very much.
All right. So just a couple of quick things for us. Fourth grade came to PA today to visit and see the concert. I heard that went well. Our trimester three just started this past week, so that's, you know, kind of the last part to the school year. On Friday, we have a growth mindset assembly. It's called the NID Show. It's one that the kids I've heard in the past they really like. There will be yogis that they sell, so we'll apologize to all parents later. But the kids love it and to end the year with the growth mindset now, because especially with SAS coming up, is really great for the kids. Our UA team has really taken off this year with trying to be kind of our community, kind of group to bring community in. So they have our, we're doing a spring arts night again, like we did last year, where they'll have the nature walk available, we'll have the art show in the building, and then they'll have the spring concert as well. So they're gonna come together again for that activity. They're also coming together to put together a field day in a different format this year. And it's similar to bringing back a little bit of kind of that competition, but what they're really looking to do is bring it across grade levels. So building community K4 and relationships that way. So really excited to kind of share that out with everybody once they finalize the details. We're getting ready to send out our SAS testing schedule, something that's different as a team. We talked about especially for, because it's the first year they've done it. Kind of the fatigue of having to take it for a long period of time. So we're gonna kind of chunk it over the course of a couple of days for reading, a couple of days for math, and a couple of days for writing. We've been doing that in the building for practice and the kids have done really well on, you know, kind of building that stamina. So we really think that'll kind of help them with it. We've also done a lot of work this year on, again, the growth mindset and really kind of getting rid of the stigma of these types of assessments, whether it's STAR. We're using it as this is a show what you know type of a thing. And it really works to spend the year, like showing them different types of ways that you can show what you know. So when you get to these types of tests, it's not always as stressful as if it's this one time a year thing that you hear. So that's something that's been shifting throughout last year and into this year. We have, our kindergarten registration is open and we've got quite a few. I think we're up to about 30 or 40 already that have started the process, which is pretty good. And then we're hoping to put together a kindergarten information night for May as well. And then the last thing that we want to talk about, and I do have a handout for this one, is something that we're very excited about. If you would take one. So we spent, I know I've mentioned to you guys a lot about data and what we've done, kind of tracking student growth and identifying needs in the building. And what we are looking to do is to bring back our title preschool next year. We have figured out the space constraint. Obviously, it's still there, but we really feel the need for shifting our title resources that we currently have into early intervention. That gives us a solid foundation to help our kiddos as they go K4. So our goal of the preschool program is really to provide literacy and numeracy. But I think the bigger component is the social emotional component for our kiddos. Many of our kids are coming in not having access to preschool, coming straight from, you know, an at-home environment, which is just very different when they get here in kindergarten. So if we can get our kiddos in earlier and provide them with that time, then they're, they're ready for kindergarten and really more successful with it. So what we're looking at is pretty much the same program that was run previously, that we would have two sessions daily, so a morning session and an afternoon session. It would cap at 10 students each for each session. We'd look at four days a week, Monday through Thursday. It runs about 135 days for the school year. And then we are looking to staff it with at least one certified teacher or to find an assistant teacher to be in there to support the kiddos. And then, as you can see, we would look for screenings to take place in spring of this year. Depending on, you know, if we get enough kiddos in, we could extend it into the summer as needed. And eligibility requirements are here. These are the same ones that we've had in for the past. We have the staff that's already done this, so we're pretty excited across the board to be able to bring this opportunity back to Pembroke. So I think those are pretty much all the things we have for Hill School.
All right, questions, comments?
Just dates for Field Day and the Nature Hike Day, whatever that one is.
The Field Day is May 26th. And our Spring Arts Night, it'll be K2 is May 9th and 3-4 is May 10th. We're splitting it again because we have such a big turnout that we have to split it. Otherwise, we can, I mean, we can barely fit with K2 coming in and 3-4 coming in.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have one. As far as the Title I goes, did I miss it? What space are you using for that?
So it'll be out, they'll be out in the modular, which is where we have our current title staff. We also have an occupational therapist who's out there. We're gonna pull the occupational therapist into the building, rearrange some space in there, so it will be in the modular as well.
Others?
I had just one. With the SAS and the STAR and all that stuff in the springtime, is that all on Chromebooks now, too? And so I thought it was and I remember having the concern a few years ago when it started, like, are we testing math or are we testing how good a kid can use a Chromebook? Have you seen over the years, like, kids know how to use it more?
Yeah. So we definitely have the push where for STAR, our first graders took it for the first time this year in December. So as they go through, they're getting access to the formats. Putting it back in really with fidelity, you know, the past couple of years, we've seen now your third, our third graders will get on and they're like, this is no problem for them. They can get in. By fourth grade, they're pros. And again, it's really the idea is getting rid of the stigma. Like that this isn't, you know, it doesn't have to be something major. It's, this is one way you show what you know. And we do have conversations with the staff about the different things that it tests and what data gives us. And that's something our Student Center and Learning Team is diving into from now to the rest of the year, really looking at our assessments and are they giving us what we need? So.
Thanks. Last call? All right, then we have exec board.
Forget the date. The last time the full SAU board met, we did have their final interview with Jack Finley, who was interviewing for the Peter Warburton Spottas Superintendent for Epsom, Chichester, and Allentown. And since then, I think you've all seen that he has accepted the offer. And then there hasn't been another meeting since. Our next one is April 12. Location and time to be determined, because I didn't see that. PA at 5:30?
Is that exec or full?
That's exec.
Oh, that's full?
Oh. Sorry. I didn't read the fine print.
Questions about that? Okay. What's up with the Hill School stuff?
I don't have my notes, but our last meeting was February 21st. And it was a very quick meeting. I think I may have reported on it, but if not, they were just going through. What they were gonna be doing is a lot of surveys with the teachers, small groups of gathering with the teachers. And that, they really just needed to see what happened. If SB2 went through, did it change the timeline? So it was just a quick meeting. We were supposed to have a meeting tonight, but the surveys have taken place and the meetings have started with the teachers. So they decided to cancel tonight and the next one is April 18th because they have a lot of data to now shift through and give us some more information. And if I'm missing anything, feel free to jump in.
Okay, questions, comments? All right, and the last one is MBC. So I think everybody's aware that the budget, the CBA, everything on our warrant passed, other than SB2. So we have the budgets that we asked for. I believe that the MBC's planning on doing a retrospective. Again, I don't remember seeing an email about it yet, so I can't tell you a date, but I might have just missed it. I will say, I think that this, this is my fourth year, I think, doing this and easily the best one. It was, the meetings were cordial, very cooperative. They were extremely happy with the timing and format of information that Amber presented. They were very happy with the changes that Josh made to CIP submissions. And I think, you know, it would be real easy on a year like this where that big scary number on the tax impact sheet was high for that session to be, I guess, more adversarial than it was. But they were all very honest. They looked through it. They didn't find anything that they thought was out of line and they supported that with the town. So it was, it was a very good working relationship. And I think over the past four or five years, that relationship has gotten nothing but better. So hopefully, we can keep that going. Any questions about MBC? Okay, then number six is consent agenda and we have two.
Yes, so we'll start. Dan can speak up if he would like to. I'm really happy at this proposal to give some students the opportunity to go to Washington, who missed out when there was COVID. So I think that that's great that the teachers stepped up to do this. 20 and 21, two classes at Three Rivers and some of the sending schools from other districts didn't go to their class trips. So they're giving those two classes the opportunity to do so in high school. The sheet was in there. And Dan, do you want to talk about any other details or?
Yeah, thank you. So this is, this trip would be grounded in the civics and American government curriculum that our juniors take. There is a question on here regarding whether or not an administrator and a nurse would go on the trip. The answer to both of those is yes. And then it really depends on costs, which is, you know, we've worked with World Strides for a number of years. We, as a district, have a relationship with them. And, you know, the trip would be consistent with whatever they would do for the eighth grade trip. One notable exception here is the eighth grade trip typically goes to Gettysburg, unless that's changed recently. But they would not do that and that would obviously be a decrease in the cost.
Great. And this is next year. So this is like our initial sort of just approval to go ahead with the process type of thing, right? So does anybody have any questions about the trip? The one thing I would comment, because I think I've kind of taken the other position on this in the past. I can't remember for sure, but I think I've kind of come around on the fact that these trips are, I guess, especially the eighth grade one, really is part of the curriculum. And so I know we've tried to put money towards it in the budget and sometimes we kind of do half of it or whatever. But I would, I would hope that whoever's making the budget for next year, in your case, and that these things would continue to be put in there. And who knows if they'll pass, but I, it's a developmental thing. Going to the nation's capital is important and I do see it as part of the curriculum. So I know sometimes you put stuff in there long enough, feels like you shouldn't anymore. But I would definitely encourage those things to be, continue to be put in there. So we need a consensus or a motion?
I would do a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue with the planning process for the DC trip of April 24. Second?
Any other questions, discussion?
I think because it's, the motion is for the planning of the trip, that they would then come back with details, more details. But we did agree some years ago, if it's gonna be an overnight trip, the board wants to make sure they're ready for that.
Other questions, comments? Is that the same week as the eighth grade? Would it be sort of a combined trip or? Okay.
There won't be any cross pollination between these two groups, but it is the same week.
Okay. Anything else going once?
Great.
Then there is a motion to approve the continued planning of the proposed trip for April of 2024 to Washington DC. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we got another consent item.
So I didn't put this in the drive today because Amber and I have been having some conversations about these. You've seen these account transfer requests before. And we did, the auditors asked us a question. And since we're in the process of the audits, we're gonna press pause on the transfers if the board is in agreement with this concept. So the auditing firm contacted Amber and said, hey, your general ledger doesn't match. And she said, well, how can that be? I closed, everything balanced. What didn't match was that we've been transferring between the... What didn't match was that we've been transferring between the unlike lines. So for instance, we, if we followed through with this transfer, the one on top, I think it's the one on top, for $2,400, we would be transferring from the section 2620 in, to 2620 from 1410. So that means when the books end, the 1400s are going to have a different balance than the 2600s than you budgeted in your budget, was voted on. So we think the approach right now that we're going to take, if you're agreeable, is to really give permission to over expend the lines. We understand where Dan would be getting the money from, and he's not going to spend that money if you give permission. But for now, we're thinking that that's the cleanest process until we get through another audit. With this auditing firm, they come in and we have a chance to talk them, talk to them and say, hey, what's best practice on this, because we want to do it the right way. Does that make sense? So typically, and Dan, I don't know if you want to kind of talk about, there's a lot of reasons for increased costs, and there's a coaching position that wasn't going to be filled, so we were able to cover these other things using those funds. So do you want Dan to kind of summarize what each of them are quickly or?
What does everybody, what everybody like? I'm, I'm comfortable with how it's been described, but if.
So I think the, I would ask that the motion be to allow for over expending lines using the funding source as outlined in the transfer request.
So if everyone's good with that, I'll, I'll move to approve this. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, questions?
I guess my question is just, the 2019 audit has just been completed.
Yeah.
And submitted. Is that the first complete audit that this firm has done?
No.
So they never caught this, or they never had a problem with this before?
This is, I don't know that we would have had a ton of transfers in any other audits, because we had the SAU done, and we don't usually have to transfer funds in the SAU budget. And I think Allentown's was done with them, and I don't recall it coming up. But since they just reached out to Amber, she doesn't like to hear anything doesn't balance, because that's her superpower is balancing everything. So I think that's why we're just pushing pause till we get clarification. And once some transfers came in, I said, oh, let's figure a way out to do this until we get to talk to them further.
So the 19 was the first one that they've, for Pembroke that they've completed then, okay?
Correct.
Other questions?
Yeah, do you anticipate more of these type of requests for transfers?
I don't know that. I mean, we're getting closer to the end, so I would doubt it. Carrie, does that make sense to you too? If you understand it, then I agree.
Other questions?
It's audit speak, and I'm doing my best here.
So I have one, and, and I don't, I don't think this probably actually matters in the grand scheme of things, but for, I guess, perception and trying to be responsible in it, can we put a, an end date on this? Can we say for the current fiscal year and after July 1st? We need to reevaluate if we're going to over expend lines?
Well, we would still bring it before you, because we, even transfers over $1,000, they were required to come to the board. So I would do the same thing with an over expenditure. I would never do that without your permission.
Okay, I just didn't want to be like, hey, for now and forever, we can overspend.
No, just these.
And what we're approving is limited to these line item accounts to these amounts.
Yes.
So it is one, two, three, four, five, five? Any other questions? Okay, then there is a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Uh, no gifts and donations? Okay, so then we need to reorganize the board and choose representatives for, oh, look at that. Thank you. I have my phone already, but it's hard to write on the phone. Yeah, I can, I write with my right hand anyway, Gene, I can set it right there. Okay, so I guess I have to write my name in the first box already. Okay, so the next position is Vice Chair, and last year that was Amy. So let me just take a step back. In at least some of the years that I've been here, I don't know if we always do, we've kind of let the person that did it last year say, yes, I would like to do it again, or no, I wouldn't. And that doesn't mean they have to, but just so we get a sense of if we're being mean by nominating that person again. Is everybody okay with doing that for each one?
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Yeah.
I, I feel helpful when Andy says like, ah, I can't make it. Do you think you can share the meeting?
Okay, so then Amy's okay with doing it, and we are open for nominations.
I'll nominate Amy Manzelli as Vice Chair.
Please, sir, a second? Okay, any discussion? Anybody else that really wants to do it? Okay, then all in favor of Amy Manzelli being the Vice Chair for 2023, 2024, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
All abstain.
Okay, um, next is Municipal Budget Committee. And I guess, just so everybody is aware, if you don't have the paper, there is an alternate for this one. I did this the past four years. I would kind of like to not. I'm happy to be the alternate if people would like that. And in that capacity, I am also very willing to still do the presentation at PA. I mean, everything, but I'm sort of just at a point in my life where every, every Thursday from October to February is a little bit too much for me. Which kind of stinks, because it is a nice connection to the town, and I prob, I know what goes on in Pembroke mostly because of my time in NBC, but I'd like to take a step back from that if somebody else is willing to take it on.
I nominate Jean.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I don't have anything to do on Thursday nights anyway.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, then all in favor of Gene Gauss being the NBC rep, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Is that precedent, since Amy did, I'll abstain.
I only did expanded it.
Okay, NBC alternate was Gene last year, so he can't do it. Because he can't have two seats in that room. But like I said, I'm, I'm happy to do alternate if, if people want me to.
I feel, I feel like you've had a role in this for so long. It would be really helpful institutionally if you like, piece back by doing alternate this year and like then stepped all the way out. But if you, if you're only saying you would like to be the alternate as like a consolation prize, and you really would like all the way out, I think we could probably manage that as well.
No, I really don't mind being the alternate, and honestly, I mean, that, not to toot my own horn, but I get a lot of comments every year that people understand the presentations that I give, and that's the reason that I got involved in NBC in the first place, is try to help make sure that people understand what they're voting for, and I'm, I'm happy to do that, so.
I nominate Andy.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Great, all in favor of Andy being the Municipal Budget Committee alternate, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All abstain, because now I'm just having fun with it.
I would like to continue on maintenance and facilities. Me and Josh and Ian West are actually having some interesting conversations, kind of really, I'm, I'm now kind of really getting into this role now that the pandemic busyness associated with my school board service is mostly over.
Can we, I probably should have started this before. Do you mind giving just like a 10,000-foot view of what you do on here? We should probably do that for the rest of it.
Mostly it has been nothing. But during the pandemic stuff, I checked in with Josh a lot about like the HVAC stuff, and now mostly it's more about energy efficiency and renewable energy and that sort of work, especially associated with the PHS work.
All right, is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Amy as our Maintenance and Facilities Representative.
All right, is there a second? All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of Amy Manzelli continuing as Maintenance and Facilities, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? All right. All right, Exec Board Rep.
I voted for myself.
Breaking tradition.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Keep us standing on our toes. Exec Board Rep, I, I think everybody's pretty much aware of what the Exec Board Rep does. And it was Gene last year.
Yeah, it's once a month on, usually once a month on Wednesdays. I would be happy to continue in that position, but if someone else would like to find out what else is going on behind the scenes at the SAU, you are more than welcome.
Shouldn't we slot Carrie into some of these?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have interest, or is there a nomination?
If you're happy to continue, and I did notice that Carrie had some other notes on her sheet, I nominate Jean.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other conversation? Okay, then all in favor of Gene Gauss being 23, 24 SAU Exec Board Rep, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? All right, CIP was also Gene, you want to give a?
Yep. Again, this is, I've done this probably five years now. And I, I enjoy it during the summertime. Once, was it, once a week, starting towards the middle of July, I think, right? Something like that. Runs into August, so you go to all the town departments, finishing up at the school. And pretty much you find out what's going on, what they're going to be requesting to go into the budget this year, and what their five-year plan may look like. You know, I, I enjoyed it. Again, I don't want to, if somebody else has an interest in that, I don't have a problem with it at all.
You also get to learn how Jerry really feels about the Town Clock.
Yeah, Town Clock, and yeah, if anybody else was, you could have seen that wood chipper too. That was, that was like one of the scary, just, not kidding you, standing next to that thing made you feel a little worried. Even when it was off, so.
Okay, any other interest or nomination?
I'll nominate Jean.
Okay, is there a second?
Are you interested?
I, I will take that if, if.
Is that something you're writing down in your sheet?
Well, that's not on my sheet, but I don't mind. That's not something that I'm afraid of.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, so I'd be happy to.
Technically, there's a nomination for Gene, so is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay, discussion? Okay, so this will be interesting. All in favor of Gene being the CIP rep for next year, please say aye.
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 Okay, there you go. I'll say aye too then, because I don't want to be. All right, any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. PA Scholarship was Stacy last year. I did that the year before, so I can speak to a little bit. It's one day a year. It's actually pretty fun. It's during the workday, if I remember right, it's important to say. But you sit with the Guidance Counselor and a few other representatives at PA and discuss what scholarships are available and kind of help sort of pass those out. And it's, it's kind of a neat look at behind the scenes in the Guidance Office and how some of those decisions are made. It's also one of the things I think that I've done since I've been on the board that most directly impacts students. And it's not much of a commitment.
I would like that in a, maybe in my third year, but I have a senior this year and next year, so I don't feel like that would be a good spit for me. There may be some bias in that, is what I'm trying to get at.
Can you assure that it's during the day? My problem is I work nights, and it's during the school day, then I, I don't mind.
No, it's not, I think it was in Eve.
Oh, really? The year I did it, it was.
So that's why I'm very selective of what I can offer to do, because I had to rearrange my work life for Tuesdays off, because I work nights, two to 10.
That one's coming up, right? Or, yeah. I mean, I, I can probably do that one if, if nobody else. That's not a big commitment.
What time is it normally?
I'll nominate Andy.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor of Andy doing PA Scholarship Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
I'm just generally in favor of anything that takes to talk about yourself in the first place.
I don't know if I've ever done it before, I don't know. I've also never abstained before, so, well, not never, but you know. Manifest Review was Melanie and I, so.
Sure. I would just ask that whoever takes this role on has the availability to click the sign, DocuSign button very quickly.
Yeah, so it can't be me.
Our Manifest Review, you know, first the, the treasurer, I think the treasurer's first, right? Treasurer is first, it needs board members, it needs Amber, somebody else. So there are multiple signatures, and we can't mail the checks to pay the bills until it's signed. So it's really important that it's done quickly.
I think Amber's second, because when I sign, Amber's already signed.
Yeah, and I usually am the first one that signs right after Amber. I don't mind, because it pings right up, and no matter where I am, I sign it immediately. Yeah.
So my, okay, so I first will nominate Melanie to.
Second.
Okay. The next question I have, okay, well, I guess we'll vote on it then.
Well, if you got discussion, we can do that.
Well, no, it's the next one, next one, yeah.
Right, okay.
Not about Melanie.
Uh, all in favor of Melanie Camillo being on Manifest Review Committee, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions?
So here's the question. Are you still treasurer?
I have to resign as treasurer, so I can.
I nominate Carrie. For Manifest Review.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of Carrie Dean being on Manifest Review Committee, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions?
All abstain.
It is, um.
She's gonna, she's gonna kill us.
Keeping you on your toes, Sandy.
So we'll pause briefly, just Carrie brought up a good point, or the conversation. So we, we do need a treasurer by law. We don't have one, there was not a write-in candidate, so we need to appoint somebody. If anybody knows anybody that might be interested in it, or that wouldn't be interested, but would do it for us anyway, please let Patty or myself know, because we do have to do that.
Well, first of all, I do have a deputy, and I did speak with her today. I have not got a response. She was actually the person that was treasurer before me, so I'm not really sure what she's going to choose to do. But I do know there was some write-ins for the position. Yes.
You need to turn that over to the town then.
No.
I was wondering why we hadn't heard anything about that. Okay, so I.
We didn't have any write-ins for that one position, I don't believe, did we?
Because you did, you counted on the town.
Oh, never mind, never mind, never mind. I was like, wait a second.
Yeah, that's a different story.
I did a lot of writing.
There were a number of people that were nominated, well, written in. I mean, you know, Carrie had three, Jill had a couple, a couple of the people had a few in there also. So.
I guess first of all, our business is to get that. Carrie.
Because, I think because there was no contest to a lot of this, there was no real announcement like previous years where it was like we had, you know, because that's how I got it, was you, I had four write-ins. So there was no announcement of the number of the write-ins, so I'm assuming someone got, you know, three, four, whatever, they, and therefore. No.
No, and would.
Yeah.
Could, uh, is that something we'd have to contact? Who's got those ballots on, Jim's probably? Or would it be Cindy? Yeah, I know she was boxing them up, taking them, so.
I can reach out to Cindy.
All right. Okay, ARE Advisory Board, this was Stacy, Amy, and Melanie. What do you want to give a?
With the treasurer. It's, it is, it's.
It's, it is, it's, it, um, yeah, there's, well, no, AP is every week, and payroll is every, every other. So there's at least a manifest tomorrow that's going to need to be signed by a treasurer. So, I'm not sure yet that, yeah. So, I mean, I can see if she's answered me yet, but kind of in a pickle until we find out who has the most, had the most write-in votes, I guess. And if they're even willing to take that position.
Right. Yeah, my fear is if you got a few, and Jill got a few, and either of you, well, you can't do it, and if Jill doesn't want to do it, and then we have 12 people that each got one vote, then what do we do? We have to have an arm wrestling tournament, or?
Start calling.
Oh, we have, we have a point, okay, okay. Alright, I'll try to get that information tomorrow.
He might kill us.
I'll second that one.
I said I could appoint someone right now, but he might kill us.
We got to find out if anybody won first.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so AREA advisory board. This one, go ahead.
There's, you know, is it like approximately four meetings a year? And we attend, and we, it's important to attend those ones, because they have a really hard time making a quorum. And it is pursuant to the ARA, A, I didn't get a lot of sleep last night, AREA agreement. And there is not a ton of substance to them, and there's often confusion between, you know, like SAU versus AREA. But there are some important things that come up, you know, last year, one of the important things that came up was to, you know, band together in some bus situation or not, you know, and nothing has come of that yet, and other issues that have come up are, you know, the AREA agreement itself, what to do about that, it's a little, uh, old. And, you know, may or may not be expired. So stuff like that. I would like to do it again.
Anybody want to make a motion, or a nomination rather?
I shall nominate Amy.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, that's one, any other nominations?
I don't mind continuing, because they're known well ahead of time, and it's not a lot of meetings, so.
I nominate Melanie.
And I'll second it.
Alright. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, and we need one more.
I don't mind taking that one.
I nominate Carrie.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, and?
Excuse me, I lost track, did we pick someone for PA scholarship?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I wrote down me, I was going to say.
Not yet.
Andy will appreciate that I had to reformat into a new file into Excel, because I could not stand the Word doc.
Oh, yeah, that's. NHSBA delegate was Stacy, that was me the year before. Kind of neat, if you're interested in that stuff, it's a, it's a one-day thing, but it's a Saturday, and it's a good chunk of a Saturday, if I remember correctly. They do have breakfast, continental breakfast. It's, so.
I nominate Carrie.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is a good thing for a new person.
She said I'm in.
I nominate Carrie. I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Do you want more information, or do you know what it is?
Yeah, I would like a little bit more.
So, so pretty much, I can't ever remember, I think that, I think the actual meeting is in October, if I remember correctly. At some point, NHSBA will send out to all of us any resolutions that have come from any school boards throughout the year, that they may want to gauge whether or not they want to support in the state legislature and try to push changes, right? So we could submit something if we had a concern. And then at that delegate assembly, so we would talk about them as a board first, and see which ones we support, and then the person goes to the delegate assembly to actually officially vote on them. There's other business, there's, there's nomination of officers and stuff like that for the School Board Association, but that's, it's really about whether or not we're going to support the resolutions for the year. And it's not, I think the year I went, there was a quarter, maybe, of the schools in New Hampshire actually showed up. But there's, I mean, there's a lot of school board members all in one room, it was at the conference center, whatever, in Concord.
That triangle.
Yeah.
You get to go to the courtyard?
Yeah, is that the one, on Herschel Pond, whatever. Yeah, that's, that's what that is.
The, um, when we get, we will get a list of the resolutions that, and it also tells us at that point if the NHSBA supports it or not. So it's one of those things, you know, we tend, you know, they're pretty well-balanced, and there's a lot of minds that go through it that, you know, we're pretty much usually in agreement with them. But if there's something that we think is outlandish, we can oppose that, and you can go, and if there's enough people that want to support that, then the NHSBA will take that up in their lobbying in Concord.
It's pretty interesting.
And we can write our own resolution too, if there's something that's really, you know.
And sometimes they're nothing, sometimes their lawyer looks at it and says, this is already covered by RSA whatever, so it's unnecessary, or. But yeah, it's, it's a good time. So we have a motion, or a nomination and a second already, right? Any other discussion? Alright, and all in favor of Carrie doing NHSBA delegate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Negotiations team, we don't need, right?
Yeah.
Oh, Perez is this year already, that was fast, okay. So Amy and Melanie did it last time, somebody want to give a synopsis?
Oh, we had a blast.
We did.
And we were successful. It's, you know, you, we're a team with us from the board, and Patty, and the school district lawyer versus the, the union. And, you know, it's a negotiation, so it's like, we want this, no, we want this, no, we want this, no, we want this, and it's back and forth and back and forth, and it bubbles to the top what is really the most important, and then finally you reach an agreement, or you don't, and you go to mediation. But that hasn't happened yet, and the two that I've done, I did the paraprofessional negotiation with Gene, and then Melanie and I did the teacher contract. I really enjoy this one, and would love to continue, but I don't want to hold anyone who wants to have a turn at it, from having that turn at it.
Okay. Is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Amy.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor of Amy being on the negotiations team, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Anybody else that wants to, or yes, Melanie, do you?
I don't mind doing it again, I have a lot of experience with paraeducators, and I would love to do it unless somebody else wants to.
I nominate Melanie.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Alright. Uh, Hill Expansion says nobody did it this year, but
But I did.
Melanie, Melanie clearly did.
I would love to continue doing it, and so far it's worked out that several months in a row, it's going to be Tuesday at four o'clock before I come here, and I'd love to see it through.
Okay, I think it's important to say on this, I mean, this is probably the case for a few of these, but this is one that anybody that wants to go can go, and, and, you know. Any, well, I guess is there a nomination?
I nominate Melanie.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, or anybody else that really wants to do it? Okay, and all in favor of Melanie being on the Hill Expansion Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Alright, and then our fairly new policy committee was Gina Melanie last year, who do you want to speak to?
Want to talk, Gene?
So basically, every board meeting we come to, in most cases anyway, except maybe for work sessions, where, if you notice in the agenda, there are policies that were required to have in place. Well, those get updated, new ones get added, they get sent out, so we've got to, we've got to either adopt the one that usually comes from NHSBA, or we can reword it, however it might work, to create our own that fulfills the need. So, you know, it's, I don't know, it takes me about half an hour, forty-five minutes to read through. So basically, if it makes sense, then yeah, there are other people, like Amy has, you know, she's got the lawyer brain, and you know, so she reads into it a little bit deeper, I'm, I'm reading the words, it makes logical sense, but, you know, if someone has better insight than I, then I'd be happy to not do it.
And I would add, the committee was created, we do all of that altogether, the committee was really created because we found ourselves often having a big backlog. So the two-person committee is really to look at them first, and say, yeah, this is just a routine thing because some law's expired or whatever, and, and let us know, like, yes, let's just go ahead and do this, or bring it and say, this one's got some flavor to it, we need to discuss, that's kind of the sort of a triage situation.
I don't mind continuing, I do actually enjoy it, now that I can split my screen, and I can see the school board, and I can see ours, and mesh the words. Whoever else wants to join me, it's usually like, what, Gene, like a five-minute conversation?
Yeah.
I make sure he doesn't see things that I didn't see, like, it's not hard.
Okay, is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Melanie.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, okay?
Carrie, how do you feel about this?
I was just going to say, I mean, I, I would like to, but if I don't want, I mean, if you're.
No, no, I'd see, my thing is, like, I've watched Amy, and, and Melanie, and Stacy pick out language that I made sense to me, but either it wasn't appropriate, outdated, whatever the case may be, I don't pick up on those things. So I'm looking at the logic of it versus the wording of it. So if you're interested.
Yeah, that's, I'll have to kind of, use Melanie as my guide.
I'll nominate Carrie.
Second.
Alright, discussion? Okay, all in favor of Carrie being on the policy committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Can I ask why there's an asterisk next to that? Okay, it's not just me then, maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Before we do that, can I ask a question? I have gotten a couple, so I'm sure we've all gotten this rash of crappy spam text messages, like, oh, your Amazon account's suspended, or whatever, right? I've gotten a bunch of emails to my SAU account, maybe three in the past couple of weeks, saying that there's something wrong with my Facebook account, and I don't know if that actually got activated or not. We had talked about the Josh, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't, I didn't do anything with any of them, I just. Okay. So, communications committee, I guess I don't even remember all the things that we said it was going to do, but right, and I think sort of, we're, we talked about doing a survey to the community to gauge people's comfort level with the webpages and whatever else. And it's more or less people that are going to work outside of meetings to sort of, you know, adjust the way that we do communications. And, looking for two? One, two? Two it is. Okay.
I would love to be nominated.
Okay.
I'll nominate Amy.
Boom. Alright, discussion? All in favor of Amy being on the communications committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. I would do this one. I don't have a ton of time to dedicate to it, but I have the technology expertise to help out where necessary, so if nobody else.
I nominate Andy. I second it.
Uh, any conversation? Alright, all in favor of Andy being on communication committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, if that helps, Sandy, I don't know, you can put me down for an abstain or an aye, whichever one helps you. Alright, thanks, everybody. These are, these are not set in stone, so if something is more burdensome than you thought, or you decide tomorrow that you're really interested in something, you know, these can be modified, we don't want to change them up too much, depending on what it is, obviously, we wouldn't change NBC in December, but, you know, it's, what movie is it, it's not written in stone, it's written in shoe polish. And whoever comes in second has to wear like sunglasses and a leather jacket, and.
So, the one thing I will say, especially for the AREA, is that if, because the quorums are so hard, if you can't make it, put out, put out a text message, email, whatever, so to make us aware, then somebody else can fill in.
And on that note, I was just going to ask, I, I know it's super early, we're like, you know, less than a week into this term of the year. Can we please get that awesome, awesome calendar that you guys put together last year of like, all the everythings, you know, it had, it, okay, great. It was supremely helpful, it really was so, so useful, thank you.
To piggyback on that a little bit, there, it is possible that there will be times that whoever goes to the AREA meeting needs to vote, I mean, same thing for exec board, but especially with the AREA. Again, we can change committee assignments, so if you see the schedule way ahead of time, you know you can't be there on a night, and it, and it comes up that something might be going on that night, let us know early, because at the board meeting before that, we could change who's on the committee, so that whoever does show up can actually vote. That was important at one point last year, I can't remember why, but. Okay, cool, so that brings us to a budget update, 8B.
As of right now, your surplus is, it's close to what it was last time, 435, 700, and your warrants are at 487, so. We know more money will get freed up, we just don't know how much at this point.
Okay, so, and I spoke to that at the, the meeting, that I did not expect that we were going to give a lot back, if anything, this year, so that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. And it's something the NBC has requested, that we try to kind of close that gap, so, looks like we're going to succeed this year.
And yeah, Mark also kind of echoed that too, when he talked about, you know, it's going to be a lean year.
Good.
Which is good, that's what I think we've been shooting for, I think since, since I've been on the board, because we've had some, you know, I, I think the smallest one we had was, I think in the four, five hundred thousand dollar range.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a couple millions, a couple seven, eight hundred thousands. I mean, through no fault of our own, we've had a lot of, a lot of unconventional circumstances in the past five to six years here too. So, okay, any questions about that? Alright. Then we will move on to policy, so Carrie, I know you've been to a million of these meetings, but I guess brief notes, stuff that's on first reading, we tend to not vote on, it's just on there for, so that we have it in the drive, and we can look at it. Second reading, sometimes we vote, many times you sit on there till, till the third reading, especially if it's one of those ones that comes up that needs some correction or whatever. So we've got a couple of first readings tonight, I don't know if people had a chance to look at them or not.
The BEDH policy was, Amy took a stab at some language on the section, you had had a conversation about whether you were going to have public comments read at a meeting, so Amy made some edits, and I think we actually saved it as Amy's edits, so you would know which, which version. So that's something you've been talking about for a while, if you wanted to clear up that one, that would be fine.
Well, that all depends on if it'll open for me. There we go. Do you, yeah, do you want to summarize changes?
I can walk through it. So. Let's see. I just cleaned up all of the internal notes and deleted all that, all of my changes are in track changes, you know, that Microsoft Word function where what I'm proposing to be deleted is read and crossed out. Language that I've proposed to be added is read and underlined, or other users might have different colors, but language proposed to be added is underlined, language proposed to be crossed out is deleted is crossed out. So the first change that I made is in
Yeah.
There's actually a couple different changes I made, so. Well, there's actually a couple different changes I made, so, um, yeah, I changed on number three. Um, I just made a little change there. If insufficient speakers remain to fill the fifteen-minute periods, so I refer to them as fifteen-minute periods plural, as opposed to the thirty minutes, just to make it really clear that we have two fifteen-minute periods, we don't have one thirty-minute period. Um, so then, yeah, down in seven. Um, the wording that I came up with is, written comments must be submitted as soon as practicable prior to a board meeting, and if not received, at least two hours prior to a board meeting may not be considered during the board meeting. So, you know, we talked, talked about like, you want to get it in as soon as you can, but if you don't get it in before two hours, you know, tough noogies, like, we might not be looking at it. Um, I did stick with their recommended four hundred and twenty-five words, and I left in their footnote, um, that four hundred and twenty-five words is, if you read four hundred and twenty-five, actually, no, I took out the footnote, I'm sorry. Um, but I, I left it in with the rationale in our brains, that that is about three minutes. Um, I thought there were a couple other little tweaks. I guess that's it.
Cool, um, we can do a motion first for discussion?
Uh, motion to approve BE, policy BEDH.
Is there a second? All right, discussion, questions, comments?
I mean, I think it's a recommended policy, I think it's a policy we need to have, and I think with the tweaks that had already been made, and then this one additional, just final fine-tuning, I think it's in good shape for us to adopt.
Yep, I'm, I'm okay with it. Um, we've, we've tried to read things that, people have emailed me in the past and said, can you please read this at the meeting, and I always try to accommodate, so I don't think we're really changing a whole lot here, except, you know, codifying it. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, then all in favor of approving policy BEDH as written, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions?
Finally on that one, huh, Patty?
Yeah, it's been a minute.
About three months now? Maybe more?
All right, um. Yeah, does anybody have comments or questions about DIA or EHBR?
I was just gonna ask if Gina Melanie had a chance to sort of screen them.
I didn't.
So, um, DIA, the board had requested, and we had already, I think, been in process of sending that to the auditors, because that was one that we're required to have, so we sent it to the auditor to say, hey, does this have all the language that you'd be looking for when you review this policy? Um, so as soon as we hear back from them, I'll bring that to you. Um, and then the records retention schedule is pretty prescribed by law, on how long we have to keep things.
Okay.
I just briefly looked at the record retention one. Um, my only question was, nothing's changed with special education laws or anything with files, like, it's all the same. It's been updated. That was my only question.
Okay, um, so we'll, we'll bring them for a second reading next time, um, sounds like we should be able to at least take care of record retention. Um, and hopefully we hear back about the other one as well. Any other questions, comments about policy before we move on? Okay, um, we've got another public comment section, Mr. Coughlin, do you want to say anything?
We read your up, your, we read your update and the list of, a very long list of things that you've accomplished, so thank you.
I'd like to.
Comprehensive.
I'd like to add an agenda item briefly, how, how is, how is practice?
It's step in the redaction.
Actually, in, in response to your report, we did talk about how, how, was that you on the tractor at Election Day, and, and some members confirmed, yes, that was him.
He got really close to the, uh, the, uh, fencing, the, uh, rails by the thing there, and, I mean, it was like a pro. I mean, he dropped that blade in there and just dragged it right out.
Almost like he's done it before. Okay, um, then we'll move on to number eleven, and we've got two plus one, so Patty first.
Um, so Jess Thicford looked into our transportation costs currently, we had talked about special ed transportation at the last meeting. Um, so it's a little bit tricky, um, because Hill School, we have ten students getting transportation at a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Um, this is Cliff Notes, Three Rivers, we have four students at forty-seven thousand, PA, we have five students at eighty-nine thousand. So the difficulty, if we only got one bus, is that we have kids all over the place, so like Portsmouth, Northfield, Concord, um, which would make it very difficult to get all those kids to all those places on time with one twenty-passenger bus. Um, so she was thinking it would probably mean more than one, and at that point, she's not sure it would be very cost-effective, so she's happy to get you very precise numbers, but just the initial review looks like it's probably not gonna work, unfortunately.
This is a, you know, a question arising out of my own ignorance, but does it, is it required to be a bus? Um, I know there might be, some of these kiddos might be in a wheelchair, you know, um, so does it have to be a bus for student transportation, or does it?
It has, the vehicle has to be approved as a school bus.
So it could be a van.
It could be a van, but it has to be approved, has to have all the, you know, the extinguisher and the, the arm and the lights and all that stuff.
So Uber's out. So Uber is out.
Yes. You laugh. Many years ago, before the law changed, we would get kids however we could, we had kids with like bus tickets, and like, we just got to get them there, um, but you can't do that anymore.
Any questions or comments about that? Okay.
Um, Amber did the enrollment tracking update, um, I don't know, Carrie, if you, have you seen that sheet? You probably have in the past, right? Um, so we're twenty-five students to the positive, which is great news. We go through, it should be pretty stable from here on out, I would think, because we're in, already into March.
Okay, questions?
That's all I had.
Questions, comments about enrollment? And Amy?
All right, I'm so excited, this has been sitting on my counter for like a month to show you guys, because I cleaned out my office and found it, and I was like, ah, this would be great! Um, so in my never-ending plug for us to have a strategic plan, I'll pass this around, but this is, um, I want to get into this, um, this is an example of what I hope that we will be producing one day as our strategic plan, and/or, when I say that I would like us to begin producing a snazzy annual report, unlike the annual report that goes out as part of the town annual report, uh, this is what I'm talking about. So this is just, it's just an example of an annual report, um, from New Hampshire Audubon, valuing connections, a vision for our second century. Now, just to be clear, I'm not supporting that like, their goals would be our goals. It's just an example of like, you know, ooh, look pretty, and they used words to communicate, you know, their vision. Um, you know, gorgeous images, right? And it's, it, it reminds me a lot of what the Hill School is going through right now, in terms of like, the big, heavy-hitting points, and then like the subsidiary points, and so on and so forth, so I'm not gonna like belabor the whole point here, but I will pass this around as a visual aid, just to sort of, I talk about it a lot, you know, and I thought, having a visual to sort of like have at the light at the end of the tunnel of something we might produce one day, might be really helpful.
Thank you. Any questions for Amy? I guess it's worth noting at this point, Melanie did reach out to some folks about strategic plans too, she emailed me about that a few hours ago, and I haven't read the whole thing yet, so.
That's okay. I, do you want me to just?
Sure.
So I still have some more feelers out, but two people, one was a Concord School Board member who's done this professionally, was, was a school board member for a little while, and has done this, um, facilitated strategic planning professionally, and is willing to come and talk what he could do, if you guys want a proposal after. The other one has done many strategic plans, one that I've been a part of, and has done them for school boards before. He was also willing to come to a meeting, talk about what he could do, and I kind of just gave the contact information to Andy.
Well, so, um, maybe we'll, I'll get that information out to the rest of you, um, and we could put this on the agenda for our next, uh, it seems more like a work session thing, but that's like a whole month away, so maybe we'll put it on for next time. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, if they can make it that fast, I don't know, but we'll see. I know. Um, sorry, I'm gonna pass this on right now, because I will get distracted. Um, okay, uh, so the board does have need to go into non-public session in accordance to New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three roman numeral two, small letters B and C, which are the hiring of any person as a public employee, and matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. On a roll call vote to enter non-public at seven fifty-two, Carrie?
Yes.
Amy? Melanie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a S.